Today is a day about celebrating the Armenian heritage, about their culture, and about just inclusiveness.
I think for our community to have this, we are blessed. And it just, I think it adds awareness.
For us to be a part of a community that has wrapped its arms around all groups, immigrants, native, people that are here, just to be positive contributors to the community.
You know, we have the most beautiful city because of our diversity. And celebrating the contributions of the Armenian community here in Tahunga, I think is emblematic of that.
The city cracks down on illegal dumping, a special commemoration at City Hall. And prepare for fires and emergencies with notifyLA.com. All this and City Beat.
Councilmembers Bob Blumenfield and Paul Caretz joined local leaders to pay tribute to the 11 victims of the Tree of Life synagogue shooting that occurred October 27, 2018, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, with a commemoration at City Council.
This tragic commemoration serves as a reminder that each of us has the duty to stand up to hatred in our communities. To let it go unchecked is akin to passive approval. And we must never let that happen.
Illegal dumping has been an ongoing issue in Los Angeles. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently announced that the city is cracking down with stronger enforcement and stricter penalties for those who dump trash and other items illegally.
Since I've been a council member, I've dealt with the scourge of illegal dumping in neighborhoods where people think they can come into neighborhoods, come by businesses, dump illegally the goods that they have, and leave, waiting for somebody else to pay for the cleanup, waiting for somebody else to take it on as their problem.
Wildfires can erupt anytime. Make sure you and your family are prepared with the latest emergency and evacuation information. Subscribe to receive alerts on your phone for your neighborhood, schools, businesses, media, and other interest areas by downloading notifyLA.com.
Councilman David Rue gives a big thank you to L.A. City's various departments. Gil Reyes takes us to the annual Council District for Employee Appreciation Luncheon.
A celebration in Griffith Park honors those L.A. civic employees who helped keep the city rolling. There's free food, music, and yes, raffle prizes for workers like Ed Santa Cruz from the city's Information Technology Agency.
I'm going to Mauro's Peruvian, baby. Fifty, fifty bucks.
I want a $180 gift certificate to a Serenity Hair Salon.
Is that going to be put to good use?
I hope so.
This thank you luncheon hosted by L.A. City Councilman David Rue, whose district stretches from Sherman Oaks through Griffith Park to Miracle Mile.
Every potential issue that could happen in a city happens in my areas. So I am really grateful to every single department that works above and beyond, and in many cases understaffed.
Take the city's General Services Department.
All my work is payment services. We pay all the bills for the city of L.A.
And you work hard, right?
Oh, very hard.
Tell us about a typical day so that people know about General Services.
A typical day is processing probably over 100 invoices a day.
Wow.
Yes.
We do work very hard, but it's nice to get thanked.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for everything that you do, day in and day out, overtime, before work, because this is how we make our city great.
Prizes were donated by restaurants and other businesses throughout Councilmember Rue's 4th Council District. And local band The Hollywood Del Tones supplied the live entertainment. Wisdom LA put on a visually stunning treat for the eyes as visitors made their way through an immersive art experience surrounded by vivid, colorful recreations of Dia de Muertos.
This is what we feel during the Festival of Life.
What we're seeing today is an immersive art installation that brings to life Dia de Muertos in a new way. So we're taking the best of what the holiday is and reinterpreting in a very artistic and very cool way. We have four domes, and in each dome we actually have different elements of the Dia de Muertos.
We have some amazing cocktails, which I absolutely love. The artwork is really dope. There's a blend of like fire and lights and water. It's kind of like a sound bath. So every room that you walk in is a completely different experience and just a great way to celebrate the holiday.
Get a taste of what Dia de Muertos signifies for us, for Latinos, and especially for Mexicans.
For other exhibits or events taking place at Wisdom, visit wisdom.la. Grilled oysters, fried chicken, music, friends, and community. What else can you ask for? That's what the Taste of Soul was all about as thousands came out for a real neighborhood block party.
Taste of Soul, the biggest, best party in Los Angeles. Every year, 350,000 people. Nearly one out of 10 Anzalinos come right here to the heart of L.A. to celebrate food, music, culture.
I'm enjoying today. This is a great opportunity for Los Angeles to come together, enjoy a Taste of Soul, really enjoy a sense of community, a sense of the culture, the food, that is part of what makes L.A. great.
Everybody has gotten the message that it's a real good event to spend your Saturdays. The best attraction here is food.
Right.
It makes me feel great to see everybody come together and just have a great time.
Everything out here is amazing. Make sure you come out next year, because you're definitely missing out.
Each year, the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising teams up with the Hollywood Studios to showcase the clothes that make the shows. Anita Bennett takes us inside the school's 13th Annual TV Design Costume Exhibition.
I know this. I know this because I've seen it.
They're the costumes you see on Game of Thrones and other popular TV shows. Now you can see them up close at the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in downtown L.A.
This is the 13th Annual Outstanding Art of Television Costume Design Exhibition. Here we feature over 100 costumes from 23 featured shows, really featuring the Emmy-winning costumes, as well as a lot of nominees.
Among this year's Emmy winners are the costumes from Amazon's The Marvelous Mrs. Maisel and HBO's Game of Thrones.
We have people in the museum that work the entire year keeping an eye on all the buzz of the costumes and the costume design in TV shows. So obviously, when it's a show like Game of Thrones, naturally, we want them to be here. When it's something like The Masked Singer, we want those to be here because they're so grand. And also, the costume designer from Masked Singer, she's an alumni of FIDM.
You'll also find costumes from hit shows like ABC's Blackish.
A lot of work goes into making these costumes for TV. Sometimes it looks so easy, and that, you know, a lot of people say, if you don't notice the costumes in a TV show or even a movie, then the costume designer has done their job.
Also on display, sketches, illustrations, and notes from the designers.
We have some gorgeous sketches and digital renderings, mood boards here. We like to do that as give an extension of what goes into the work of creating the costume designs. And that there's so many artists that are part of that creation. A fun fact that a lot of people don't know is that the studios own the costumes. A lot of people think it's the costume designers that own the costumes, but no, the studios own the costumes. So we get the costumes from the studios temporarily. They give it to us temporarily, and then we give it back to them, or they come and pick them up when the exhibition is wrapped up.
While the exhibit is free and open to the public, there's also an educational component to help students learn about the art of costume design.
It's such a wonderful blessing to have this exhibition right here at the college for our students to come here. We see every day instructors bring their students, their classes here, to sketch the costumes, to learn a little bit about the costumes. We also want to educate the public and let them know the diversity in costume design.
The exhibit runs through October 26.
Once the TV exhibition closes, the Fashion Institute will start organizing its motion picture exhibit of movie costumes. This may be an animal population that's shrinking, but it now has an extra member. We're talking about the Masai giraffe, the tallest species in the animal kingdom. We visit the L.A. Zoo to greet the cute little newcomer.
The giraffe herd at the L.A. Zoo just got a little bigger. And a baby giraffe is exactly what the public is getting. The newborn Masai giraffe came out of the gate for its media and public debut. This, its first full day outside for all visitors to see as she bonded with the rest of the herd. For now, call her Baby. She doesn't have a name yet.
When the baby's born, they average about six feet tall, 150 pounds. This particular one was 138 and about six and a half feet. So she was quite tall.
She might just get as tall as her father, who is 17 feet tall. Meanwhile, she spends her time discovering, sniffing, and tasting the world around her.
They have an 18-inch-long tongue, which helps them kind of pluck leaves off of trees. The dark pigmentation of their tongue helps prevent their tongue from getting sunburned since they spend all day in the hot African Savannah sun plucking leaves off the trees.
As if this little type wasn't already special enough in herself, and she's right there with all the grownups, she's also special for a different reason. She was born as part of a species survival plan program. And earlier this year, giraffes were labeled as endangered.
I can imagine a world without giraffes. I mean, they're just a magnificent species that unfortunately is suffering what's been referred to as a silent extinction because a lot of people don't realize that their populations are declining.
Animal advocates say the best way to help the giraffes is to contribute to groups working to save them, such as the Giraffe Conservation Foundation. It could mean seeing a lot more babies like this one, a baby that is learning fast, and she seems more than ready for her first close-up.
To find out more about the Giraffe Conservation Foundation, visit giraffeconservation.org. Check out some cool artwork at an open studio. Get your Java fix at a coffee festival. And if you have a thing for sneakers, you definitely won't want to miss this pop-up. All this and things to do.
Fall is here, and the artists at the Keystone Art Space are getting ready for their seasonal open studio. Keystone Art Space has over 50 artist studios featuring painting, illustration, printmaking, photography, sculpture, and more. The event is free and open to the public, so check out the Keystone Art Space Open Studio Saturday, November 9, beginning at 6:00 p.m. For details, email keystoneartspace@gmail.com. The Los Angeles Coffee Festival is a champion of culture. Get set to enjoy.
Please report down to council chambers so we can start our meeting. His council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscaino. Sidio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Caretz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
It was the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Lee moves, and Mr. Rue seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Caretz moves, and Mr. Ofero seconds next.
Madam President, there is a request to continue Item 1 to December 4, 2019.
Okay, without objection. That would be the order next.
Item 2 is an item noticed for a public hearing, and there are cards for this.
All right. Let's go ahead and hold that on the desk. What's next?
Items 3 through 19 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for 3, 5, and 18 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration. Madam President, Item 18 is a communication from the chair, and there are cards on this, and it should be held on the desk for the cards.
Very well, members. Are there any specials on any of these items? Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining ballots. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Madam President, Item number 13, there is an ordinance and is held over to November 15 unless reconsidered with 12 members present. And next are Items 20, which is an item scheduled for closed session.
Do you want to speak to Item number 20, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. The item was dealt with in Budget and Finance, and it's routine. And I believe the council members can vote on it in open session unless somebody requests it go into closed. And in terms of the action, it's simply a request to adopt the city attorney's recommendations sending the item forth with.
All right, members, are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next, Madam President, on the continuation agenda. Item 21 is the item noticed for a public hearing, and this should be held on the desk because there are cards on that. And finally, Item 22 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Members, are there any specials on this? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote on Item 22. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or public comment.
Please go ahead and take up cards on Items number 2. Sean Murphy, are you here? Come on up, Sean. You're speaking on Items number 2.
Yeah. I'll just go out. Item number 2 I'm supporting.
Okay, do you have your general public comment, Sean?
Uh, yeah. Streets need to be repaired, especially the West Valley. It's just, the streets have to be repaid or it just has to be done.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker is Mr. Delgado on Item number 2. Are you here? Is someone here with that? Mr. Delgado? You've signed up to speak on Item number 2, 21, and general public comment. That person doesn't appear to be in the room. Corey Schmidt, are you here? Corey, come on up. Corey, you're speaking on Items 2, 21, and general public comment.
Okay, Corey Schmidt, for the record. Let's talk about Argyle Avenue over there off of Franklin and Argyle. I know that we need more housing, but this just seems like it's a lot of money that we're being putting into it, and it doesn't seem like the proper design that I think we need to turn around on this one. Number 21 in regards to the project on La Tierra and Sepulveda. This one's also pretty ginormous. I don't really know what the plan is, but I believe it's at Petco right now. So I'm not sure if we're building 400 units of, you know, for dogs or not, but just, I don't know. Want to maybe think about these. So let's talk about, maybe let's go to general public comments. So, you know, I just, you guys are dressed all nice and stuff. You guys are feeling pretty good, you know. But like Item number 3 over here, I'm pretty much in the trenches over here. I don't know if you see my hair. I'm wearing the same dirty shit that I've been wearing since Tuesday. I got booted from my gym because I got, I'm getting Jimmy-jacked right now. I got booted, you know, someone conned me out of my clothes the other day, and now they're telling me that I can't come back to the gym, and I can't take a shower, and, you know, I'm getting kicked out of my house, trying to get kicked out of my city. And I need you guys to take this guy out. You know, you know who I'm talking about. You know, we're over here talking about giving, you know, snipers to LAPD. Well, you know who to take out. Take this guy out. What the hell is going on around here? I'm getting jacked over here, and I'm trying, and, you know, he's trying to kick me out of my city. This is my city. He ain't even from here. So do something about this shit. I'm tired of this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kraut Nigenian. Are you here, Kraut? Doesn't appear to be here. Next speaker, Eric Previn. Sir, you're speaking on Item number 2 and 21.
Thank you. I wanted to point out, first of all, that this is CRLA non-housing. I wanted to point out, first of all, that this is CRLA non-housing bond month. So, we're rolling out a lot of money, and I'm very excited. We got five hundred grand going to Monica Rodriguez Allegheny Park. We got two or three hundred hard-to-tell public art project in two. And today on the agenda, you know, Mr. Sadio has three hundred thousand for graffiti removal. Today Blumenfield has the remaining. But clarify how much that is, because it's not visible to the public on the agenda item, which is, I think it's number twelve, so you'll find it in the section where the public is not allowed to discuss it. But it's moving stuff forward, and we do want to know. So, I also just want to recognize the veterans today, because today is the day that we're going to recognize, I can see some individuals in uniform, and it's very moving. And Monday is actually Veterans' Day, but Sunday, we're going to be cleaning up in Hollywood Bowl parking lot on the east part of Ventura Boulevard. But Metro Los Angeles, and I know Bonin is giggling with Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Previn? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the general public comment, they were giggling, but I wanted to point out that we've been reaching out to Phil Washington, who Sheila Kuhl thinks is the best CEO in America, because we feel that individuals in our district should not have to walk through feces, which is unfortunate, because, you know, I'm a compassionate guy on the side of, in the homeless spectrum. I'm not out there power washing people out of the hillside. But I do feel that we should be able to walk decently, you know, from Bonin's car to Universal to anywhere. I mean, and especially the path where people walk. So, I'm hoping that Mr. Washington, who is the best CEO in America, can crack the nut finally, and figure out a way to get over the metro rules that would allow NBC Universal, one of our treasured partners, obviously, you don't need to say Mayor Garcetti three times, stick one, mobile pit stop. I know O'Farrell's been successful at sticking them all over the place when he wants one. Why can't we have one? Is it because of some reason? Our neighborhood council, if I'm not mistaken, voted for one over a year ago. So, I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think it would be, you know, an honor, not just to the residents of Studio City and CD2, but to the veterans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. And speaker, Lynn Moses, are you here? Mr. Moses? Is Chris Brown here? Anyone by that name? Mr. Moses, you're speaking on items two, eighteen, and twenty-one.
Yes, thank you. Item number two. You're wanting to, you're wanting to float forty-six million dollars in bonds for ninety-six units. Once again, this is obscene. The city's stealing. The city council is stealing. Everyone is stealing. That equates to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars per unit. Per unit. Units can be built for thirty thousand dollars apiece. I'm seeing it all day, every day. You people are ripping off the people. This is obscene. Four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars per unit. When the people are suffering, you have to step over people, especially in Dawson's district. King of homelessness, king of evictions, a criminal. A sellout. Trying to get the EDD office for himself, the unemployment office for himself. The council okayed almost a million dollars for his two moves. That's a criminal.
Mr. Moses, you need to stick to the three items you are signed up to speak on, sir.
Thank you. Four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The average has been about six hundred thousand dollars. Wesson gives away, like on his cumulus project, Herbert Wesson, king of homelessness, increased over seventy-five percent during his tenure. And he wants to export his homeless-generating skills to the county supervisor. Six hundred thousand dollars is the average. This one's four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Per unit. My community's largest problem is we have no representation. Price might as well be a big rock sitting there. Wesson, king of homelessness, and Dawson's criminality, king of evictions. The city is collecting millions of dollars, billions, in fees, architectural design, not in building homes. And the affordable standard, this says ninety-six affordable units, the affordable standard is the county standard, eighty thousand dollars. Nobody can live there.
Thank you, sir. Did you, you want your general public comment? You want to take it now? You want to wait? Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Chris Brown. Is no one here with that name? Rob Quan? Rob, you signed up for item two and general public comment.
On item two, I'm happy to see we have a hundred percent affordable housing project here. I was also happy to see that, you know, last month, when the Chamber of Commerce was here, council members Krikorian, Corretts, and Bonin spoke up and pushed back on the chamber's notion that we could just build our way out of a housing crisis, regardless of what type of housing we're building. I just want to highlight one other thing. Affordable housing isn't necessarily all that affordable. This week, Kai Bowman started for the Golden State Warriors. That may not, name might not sound familiar, but he actually makes so little money that he could qualify for affordable housing in San Francisco. I think that highlights part of the problem we have here with the unaffordability of housing. I'd like one of the sergeants to come up. I have a document I'd like to distribute. Now I'll turn to my general public comment. Yesterday was the one-year anniversary of the FBI raiding City Council Chamber, or City Hall. It may feel like things have moved at a glacial pace, but I'm grateful that we've at least done something, unlike our response to the Seabreeze scandal. The document I'm circulating is from council member John Ferrara, our former council president. He responded to a constituent, gave them heads-up notice that a meeting was coming up where they were going to be hearing Monumental Reform in the city of LA. That's the kind of transparency we should be able to expect in this kind of situation. Council hasn't heard these items for over six months. I remind you that in nineteen ninety, our council turned a commission report into a ballot measure in three months. We're honoring our soldiers here. I like to see that, but there are few things more miserable to see than people fighting for our freedom as we piss it away here.
Thank you. Members, let's go ahead and vote on items eighteen and twenty-one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Madison Shockley, are you here? Madison Shockley, Anthony Suggs? Neither of them appear to be here, so let's go ahead and take item number two. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
There's been a request by Mr. Rue to send item number two forthwith. Mr. Lee, are you ready for your presentation, sir? Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this is, I want to acknowledge a very, very special guest we have in our chambers today, and it is Mayor Mauricio Villanova, and his daughter, Marcela, is here. Mauricio Villanova is the mayor of San Jose Guayabal in El Salvador. So, please give Mayor Mauricio Villanova a warm welcome, and his daughter. In the face of enormous challenges that Mayor Guayabal faces in El Salvador, in recognition of his dedication to the citizens of his community, as an example to El Salvador, and all of our Salvadoran American citizens here, and immigrants here in Los Angeles and around the world, who stand for justice, and peace, and safety, we'd like to present the mayor with a certificate of appreciation for his outstanding efforts in reducing gang crime and gang violence head-on relentlessly, to maintain peace in the community of San Jose de Guayabal in El Salvador, and for the integrity and bravery evidenced in his years of mayor, as mayor of this community. And we wish the mayor bienvenidos al pueblo de nuestra senora, la reina de Los Angeles. Felicidades.
Mr. Rodriguez, are you ready for your presentation?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, colleagues. I am excited to be joined today by some pretty powerful and dynamic women, many of whom have been incredibly influential in our city leadership. I am joined today by Jennifer Leland, the Women Lawyers Association of Los Angeles president, Stacy Horst Newbert, the foundation president, Sean Jacobs, a board member and an LA deputy city attorney, Merritt Wrightveld, excuse me for mispronouncing if I did, a board member, of course, Eileen Decker, our, the WLALA past president and president of the Los Angeles Police Commission, Anne Tremblay, past president and director of the mayor's grid office, and Janine Taylor, the executive committee member of the Women Lawyers Association of Los Angeles. Would you please give them a round of applause? Today I am joined by these dynamic women in celebration of the hundredth anniversary of the Women's Lawyers Association of Los Angeles. The organization was founded in nineteen nineteen, and has become one of the largest women's bar associations in California. Their mission is to promote the interests of women attorneys and judges, to support the legal rights of all women, and maintain the integrity of our legal system by advocating for principles of fairness and equality. The group supports the Harriet Buhai Center for Family Law, which assists low-income individuals in handling family law matters, and hosts a program that provides education and mentorship to high school students. The WLALA Foundation, which grew out of the former Public Action Grant Foundation, was developed to facilitate the pro bono activities of WLALA. The foundation provides scholarships to law students, volunteer legal assistance to victims of domestic violence, and pro bono services to homeless veterans through the inner-city law center. I want to congratulate the women that are here today, because again, while their day job often lends itself to helping to provide that spirit of, that hopefulness, for many women, their off-duty activities clearly that are exemplified here today are reflective of how they continue to give of themselves and their expertise in helping to expand and protect more opportunities for women and families here in Los Angeles. And we are so proud of their amazing work, and I want to thank them for joining me here today, to be recognized for their, for all of their contributions. And at this time, I'd like to invite Jennifer Leland, who serves as the president of the organization, for a few remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and to all the members of the city council for this incredible, wonderful award. I am so honored to accept it on behalf of the Women Lawyers Association of Los Angeles. And I know that my fellow WLALA members who are behind me are also delighted and honored to be here today, to witness this recognition. As Councilwoman Rodriguez mentioned, WLALA is one hundred years old. It was established in nineteen nineteen by a small group of women who wanted to promote the professional interests of women in the legal field, and that continues to be one of our core missions today. We do that through providing networking, leadership, and educational opportunities for women lawyers in Los Angeles. We also have a deep and rich history promoting gender equality and striving to improve the status of women in society as a whole. And I know the city of LA and members of this council also are committed to gender equality, and I thank you for that. And I look forward to seeing what we can all do to further that common goal. Thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Martinez, I know you are no stranger to helping to advance opportunities for women. These women behind me are another great example of the women that are in, both in and out of this building, that are continuing to expand mentorship opportunities, support one another for the greater advancement of women, particularly when we talk about women in the role of law, which is also another trailblazing environment for these ladies. And so, I want to thank them for their work, for their advocacy, and congratulations on one hundred years, WLALA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Congratulations, ladies. Mr. Lee, are you ready, sir?
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, colleagues. Today we have a very special presentation. In these chambers, we frequently honor our city's first responders, but today we have the distinct privilege of honoring and recognizing our nation's first responders. The greatest fighting force this world has ever seen, the United States Marine Corps. Before we begin, I'd like to invite the USC Navy ROTC Color Guard to present our nation's colors, and invite our very own LAPD officer, Rosalind Curry, to sing the national anthem.
March on the colors.
Please rise.
Oh, say, oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Who's bright- Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Madam President, this Sunday, November 10th, the Marine Corps will be celebrating their 244th birthday. The Marine Corps was born on November 10th, 1775, in order to augment naval forces in the Revolutionary War. The recruiting headquarters were set up by Captain Samuel Nicholas in the Ton Tavern in Philadelphia. This is considered to be the birthplace of the Marine Corps and, in effect, the birthplace of all Marines, past and present. For the past 244 years, the Marine Corps has served as America's expeditionary force in readiness. The Marine Corps has consistently done two things: make Marines and win battles. While I would love to continue talking about the Marine Corps, I think the Commandant of the Marine Corps could do it slightly better. Can we please give the Commandant's birthday message, please?
Speaking of coming up, the sun's going to be coming up here in about another five
Eight V-22 aircraft standing by. So these Marines will be ready to go, Wolf, if and when the orders come.
Every Marine trains prepares 24/7 to get the phone call in the middle of the night that your unit's deploying. The phone call you weren't expecting, but you're ready for. Marines win as a team. It's a team sport. We get there, fight, sustain, advance, and win as a team. There's so much planning, so much detail that goes into a night raid or an amphibious landing. So many things can go wrong. There's a lot of complexity to a night patrol with a platoon of Marines in tough terrain.
I couldn't even describe the amount of adrenaline rush that it takes. It hits your body and it's like a light switch, and as soon as the light turns on, you just go. And it really boils back down to the basics of that whole team concept, though, because you've trained, you've done it so many times, that it's just automatic, that muscle memory hits. And it's the whole concept of shoot, move, communicate as a team.
Is that an easy task, to launch out of the back of a Navy ship and move towards land? Knowing Marines would be the first one to put feet ashore and secure the beach.
We go back to our guys, start prepping our gear, do PCCs, PCI's, make sure everybody's on the same page. That way, when we get off the bird in our first step, it's game time from there.
We've done it before, and we'll continue to do it. But we must be able to do it from the sea. The sea is where we will launch from, maneuver from, and recover to. We have a lot of innovation and a lot of technology in the Marine Corps. But at the end of the day, the centerpiece for the Marine Corps is some small unit. That part is the focus. That is why we exist.
There's one thing, especially being an infantry unit leader, is the fact that there's so many things going on in what we call the controlled chaos of combat. And without having good squad leaders to be able to call in the medevacs, to be able to call for fire, and you know that your front's covered in all angles because the team's there and making sure that the job's getting done.
A really good operational unit is silent when they're moving. No voice commands, just Marines moving quietly, slowly, no talking.
When it comes down to it, technologies have changed, but the fundamentals of warfare remain the same. Once we hit the deck, it's all about squad leaders, platoon sergeants, assessing the situation and adapting to it, just like it has been throughout our entire history.
Implicit communications, sensing the Marine to the left and to the right, knowing where each member of the squad is and where they need to be, like a finely tuned machine. Successes and failures. And the piece that makes us know our lives are safe in the hands of others is trust. We trust our fellow Marines and sailors implicitly. We know they are trained, prepared, willing to put it all on the line when the situation calls for it, in combat, in garrison, and at home. Without trust and cohesion, a platoon doesn't exist. The unit doesn't exist. The Corps doesn't exist. I trust my life to each and every Marine who has ever earned the title U.S. Marine. I'll tell you, some of the best Marines I had in Vietnam were corpsmen. They're not sailors or medics, they're corpsmen, and they love the Marine Corps.
When I got off that train, and it was a train that I got off, it was Ferris Island, and that gunnery sergeant started yelling at me, okay? He lit a fire in me. And the day that I left boot camp, and he put a metal emblem in my hand and squeezed my hand until it bled. That still makes a difference for me.
It is with honor, courage, and commitment that we stand in the face of adversity with unwavering resilience. There is no better friend, no worse enemy, because it does not matter how bruised or battered we refuse to fail. To be always faithful, in times of chaos or peace, we willingly pay its price because freedom is not free. In faith in something greater than ourselves, we stand boldly, determined to make a difference, to make our presence felt, and to this cause, we dedicate our very lives, this title etched on our hearts until the day we die. We are once and forever United States Marines.
As a leader, you know, when we're talking about life and death, right? If they believe in you, and if they believe that you are going to take care of them, you're concerned about their welfare, they're going to respond to you in any situation.
A one devil dog to the next, happy birthday. Hoorah!
"Once a Marine, always a Marine" is not just a slogan. Here's to 244 years of success as a Corps. We still carry the torch for that person who wore the uniform over 240 years ago.
Madam President, I stand before you today because, you know, in honoring the Marine Corps' birthday, my mom often reminds me that men and women came to a small little country called South Korea some 70 years ago and sacrificed their lives so that my mother could come to this country and I could be born in the greatest country in the world. If you've ever known a Marine, then you know how important today is. It is a day of celebration, a day of camaraderie, and a day of reflection. Marines, young and old, will gather across our nation and the world in order to celebrate their birthday and to reflect on their triumphs and their stories. I want to take the time to recognize the Marines that are present here in our chambers today. It is my privilege to introduce members of the National Montford Point Marine Association who are here today. The Montford Point Marine Association was established to perpetuate the legacy of the first African-Americans who entered the Marine Corps at Montford Point Camp in North Carolina and served in World War II. It probably comes as no surprise that we have a significant number of Marines in our own city family, working in all the departments in order to improve the lives of Angelenos, just as they did for our nation. It just so happens that one of our Sergeant-at-Arms right here in Council chambers is a Marine. Sergeant Martinez, let's give him a round of applause. And I am extremely honored and proud to say that on my very own staff, a Marine serves as my senior legislative deputy. He's a veteran of Operation Iraqi Freedom, my very own, our very own, Eric Kane. Madam President, with us today, I'm honored to introduce to the council Colonel Sean McBride. Colonel McBride currently serves as a commanding officer of the Naval Reserve Officer Training Corps Unit at USC and UCLA. Colonel McBride enlisted in the Marine Corps in 1983 and served seven years with the Fourth Reconnaissance Battalion before receiving his commission in 1991. He served as an intelligence officer and has commanded at every level, including commanding Second Radio Battalion during Operation Iraqi Freedom. His staff assignments include service with First Marine Division and One Marine Expeditionary Force at Camp Pendleton, Second and Third Marine Expeditionary Force, Headquarters Marine Corps, and U.S. Marine Corps Forces Europe and Africa. His joint assignments include services with the National Security Agency and Special Operations Command, I'm sorry, Special Operations Command Pacific. Colonel McBride is a graduate of the Joint Military Intelligence College and U.S. Army War College. He holds master's degrees in Strategic Intelligence and Military Studies and is currently pursuing an executive master's in leadership at USC. His personal decorations include three legions of merit, the Bronze Star, the Defense Meritoria Service Medal, two Meritoria Service Medals, and two Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals. Colonel McBride, I want to thank you for joining us today to celebrate the United States Marine Corps birthday. And on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present you and all Marines across the globe this resolution recognizing and honoring the United States Marine Corps on this very special occasion. Happy birthday, Colonel, and I'd like to ask that all the Marines stand as we wish you all a very happy 244th birthday.
And Mr. Lee, we have two members on the queue. Mr. Lee, we have two members that'd like to say a few words. Mr. Kocorian, followed by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Mr. Lee, thank you very much for recognizing the Marine Corps birthday. Next week, next Wednesday, the council will be recognizing Veterans Day, and we'll have our, we'll each have our Veterans of the Year here to give them the honor that they've earned. And by recognizing those veterans, we will be honoring all who've served under our flag. But there's something very special in having the Marine Corps here to stand alone, as they do so often, and to recognize the Corps for its professionalism, for its valor, and to have them here to celebrate this important birthday. The Marine Corps began before this nation began. The Marine Corps was born before the Declaration of Independence was signed. And in the time, in the more than 200 years since, every single time there's been the hardest possible job that our military has been asked to serve in, it's been the Marine Corps that's gotten that call. And this means a lot to me because my dad was a Marine Corps combat veteran of World War II, served on Guadalcanal, Guam, and Okinawa. And he was, he was part of that generation that Admiral Nimitz described as having, being part of a group where uncommon valor was a common virtue. And that, of course, has been the tradition of the Marine Corps from its beginning until this very day to the people who are serving in corners of the world now that none of us would ever want to be in. There are Marines standing guard. And so I just wanted to, you know, as a guy who grew up, you know, learning the Marine Corps hymn is one of the first songs I think I knew all the words to. My first two pets were named Semper and Fidelis. So it's a real, personal honor to be with all of you today, to thank you for your service, and to wish the Marine Corps many, many years of future success in defending our Constitution, our country, and all that it represents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Lee, for bringing in this very special presentation today. Happy birthday, Marines. I am, I too am the daughter of a Marine Corps, a member of the Corps, and my father served as a veteran of the Vietnam War. And so it is with incredible gratitude for your service, both the men and women of the Marine Corps, they are not born tougher. And I couldn't be more proud to join in solidarity with my colleagues, and I think, Mr. Kocorian, you said it best. It's, you know, it's the level of valor and commitment and service of the Marine Corps is, is something very special and something that was revered in my household. But so often for individuals, especially for those that served in the Vietnam conflict, the respect and the thanks for their service were often overlooked, and they weren't met with that, with the level of respect that they were deserving of for their service. And so for those of the Vietnam conflict, I am always, I always make a point to welcome you home. And I want to thank you all for your incredible service. In fact, on, on the Marine Corps birthday, we are hosting, at Ritchie Valens Park in my district, a salute to veterans. As the daughter of a Marine Corps veteran, I wanted to make sure that we took that opportunity to also celebrate on November 10th, the Marine Corps birthday. So happy So happy 244th, you never looked better and you certainly never been tougher. So happy birthday Marines.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
Okay, I'd like to invite Colonel McBride to say a few words.
Oh, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Good morning, everyone. President Pro Tem Martinez, thanks ma'am for dedicating so much of your valuable time to this event. I'd also like to thank Navy Captain Larry Vasquez, who's somewhere around here. I know he did a lot of the heavy lifting for this. I'd like to welcome and, and say hello to all of our airmen out there. I'm sure there are a bunch behind me, former airmen and our, our soldiers. Any soldiers in the house? Coast Guardsmen? And of course, our sailors and, and of course, our Marines who are here today and getting ready to celebrate Veterans Day on Monday. So welcome. And then, of course, our Montford Point Marines. We already mentioned that for a second, but we really are in the presence of greatness today. We've got one actual Montford Point Marine here, Sergeant Johnson, Sergeant Henry Johnson, and we've got Colonel Henderson, whose brother was a Montford Point Marine. And for those who don't know, our Montford Point Marines are the first African-Americans to enlist in the Marine Corps. Now is after President Franklin Roosevelt signed Executive Order 8802, which prohibited racial discrimination in the government. And from 1942 to 1949, over 20,000 of these fine young men trained at Montford Point, North Carolina, right near where Camp Lejeune is today. And then they went on to fight on places like Palau and Iwo Jima and Okinawa, and then further on into Vietnam and also up in the Chosun Reservoir in, in, in Korea. And their performance and valor on the battlefield paved the way for the full integration of the Marine Corps that we have enjoyed since President Truman eliminated segregated units in 1949. So please, another round of applause for these American heroes. All right, so it's an honor for me to be here to celebrate the 244th birthday. And I had some remarks, I'll shorten them up a little bit. I didn't realize that we'd be taking so much of your time. But as was mentioned earlier, 10 November 1775, the Continental Congress resolved that two battalions of Marines be raised, consisting of one Colonel, two Lieutenant Colonels, two Majors, and Officers as usual in other regiments, that they consist of an equal number of privates with other battalions, that particular care be taken, that no person be appointed but such as good seamen or so acquainted with maritime affairs as to be able to serve to advantage by sea. So from our very birth, we were hip to hip with our, our naval partners. Four months later, we conducted our first amphibious assault in the Bahamas, and we've been fighting side by side with our Navy, our naval partners ever since. We're blessed today to serve in a Marine Corps that's comprised of guys and gals that are just right here behind me, physically, morally, and ethically fit young Marines who have volunteered to serve their country in the world's premier crisis response force. These remarkable young men and women have bestowed upon their Corps a bank account of trust, respect, admiration, and goodwill. On behalf of the American people, that is the envy of nearly every other public institution in the world. While the Army will always celebrate their great leaders, the Navy will always pay homage to their ships, and the Air Force will always be pursuing newer and faster aircraft, the Marine Corps will always be about our Marines. Now, the previous Commandant, Lieutenant General Krulak, or General Krulak at the time, he made the comment that I heard earlier that for over 200 Marines, our Corps has done two things for our great nation. We make Marines and we win battles. We make Marines by recruiting the very best young people that our country has to offer. We send them off to Quantico or to Paris Island or right down the road here to the Recruit Depot in San Diego where they undergo a life-changing transformation from civilian to Marines. Then we train them, we educate them, we give them opportunities to lead, and we send them all over the world where they, every day they make a difference. Then three years later, or maybe 30 years later, they leave the Corps and they return to the civilian world, a better citizen due to their experience in the Corps, and many go on to serve their, continue to serve in their schools, their communities, their cities, and their nation. Nowhere is that transition more evident than right here in the great city of Los Angeles. Today, we have about 150 recruiters working all across Los Angeles. We got about 146 working right now and four just standing around here behind me. And every, let's give them a round of applause. Every, every year, they enlist about 2,000 young Angelenos who go off to serve their country honorably, and then they come back home and they continue to serve as police officers, as firefighters, as teachers, businessmen, businesswomen, and other positions of influence and leadership. And as we've, as we've already noticed, there are several here in this room with us today. And we don't have any former Marines in the room today though, right? That's right, once a Marine, we're always a Marine. And so to the Marines here that are here this morning, we are but a few good men and a few good women, not willing to stand idly by and watch the triumph of evil, like those that fought in places like Belleau Wood, Guadalcanal, Iwo Jima, the Chosun Reservoir, and many other places, like some of you in this room today probably served at Khe Sanh, Mogadishu, Kuwait, Marja Ramadi, Fallujah, Helmand Province, other hallowed ground. We remain willing to do the dirty and dangerous things that most others are often reluctant to do. You have all played a part in our America's, our country's noble history and our Corps' noble history that we're celebrating today. I'm proud to be counted among these young men and, and wise men and women. And I want to wish them all a very happy birthday, including those that are thousands of Marines that are deployed today on the very edge of the empire. So to you all, have a very happy 244th birthday. Happy birthday Marines. God bless you all and Semper Fidelis.
I believe we're going to cut the cake, and I believe the tradition, Colonel, is the first cake, slice goes to our guest of honor, the second slice goes to the oldest serving, oldest Marine here, and the third piece goes to the youngest Marine. Is that correct, Eric? Sir? Thought you figured this out. You have some of these? You have a spatula?
I'm sure we can get some, we can find some plates in the back.
One more. Well, we're going to conclude with the playing of the Marine Corps hymn. I want to thank all of you for joining us here today and thank you all the Marines present in these chambers, in the city of Los Angeles, and across the globe. Happy birthday Marines. Everyone is welcome to join us in the rotunda for reception sponsored by our very own USO. Captain, uh, sorry, Colonel McBride, thank you so much for joining us today.
Mr. Ofer, are you ready for your presentation? Madam Clerk, can we go ahead and send items 19 and 21 forthwith?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Ofer.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall for the kickoff of Transgender Awareness Month. I want to acknowledge the following, some of whom you'll hear from in a moment, but I want to acknowledge and welcome Commander Gerald Woodard from the Los Angeles Police Department, Karina Somala, Chair of the Transgender Advisory Council, Francisco Ortega, Director of HSEID Los Angeles, along with Jesus Chui Orozco, and our honorees today, Brenda Gonzalez and Carlisha Giselle Brown. Please give a big round of applause for our honorees. The theme of the day is honoring community advocates. My office is proud to join the City of Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council and the Los Angeles Housing Plus and Community Investment Department to bring this presentation to you today and to shine a spotlight on the wonderful courageous work and advocacy of the transgender community that they provide here in Los Angeles. Earlier this morning, we dedicated the annual Trans Awareness Month Gallery exhibit titled, "Remembering Transgender American Lives Lost in 2019." I would like to thank Rabbi Emerita Lisa Edwards of Beth Haem Karashim for leading us in a moment of reflection earlier this morning at the exhibit opening, very moving, very emotional. And I would like to thank you again, Rabbi. This year to date, we've lost at least 22 transgender or gender non-conforming people in the United States, the majority of whom were black transgender women due to violence. While the details of these cases differ, it is clear that deadly assaults disproportionately affects transgender women of color. However, these transgender community members are not statistics. They were brave human beings who lived their lives unapologetically, proud of who they were and the communities that they were part of. Our exhibit hopes to honor each of their lives that were cut short far too soon. They will not be erased, nor will they be forgotten. To view the exhibit, please visit the City Hall Bridge Gallery through the end of the month of November located at City Hall East on that end of the gallery. We're grateful to have partnership with Los Angeles Police Department. A report by the LA County's Human Relations Commission indicates that hate crimes targeting the trans community are the highest against any group. The LAPD is working tirelessly to ensure the safety of this, our, community. And with us today, as I mentioned earlier, is Commander Gerald Woodard to say a few remarks. Thank you, Commander.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and Chief Michael Moore and Chief Garmala, I'm humbled to be here to show our support for the transgender community. As you know, the LAPD continues to partner with the Transgender Advisory Council and our LGBTQ task force, and certainly we've been working tirelessly on the sensitivity training, and that's ongoing training within our department. But I would be remiss if I failed to, to mention the countless lives that were lost, primarily African-American from the transgender community. The LA County Human Relations Commission conducted a study which covered the years 2014 through 2018, and if you look at hate crimes in the transgender community, it's shocking that it's about 94% compared to other communities. We all know that hate has no place in the city of Los Angeles, and we stand with the transgender community and all community to say enough is enough. Again, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this celebration, and congratulations to Carlisha Brown and Brenda Gonzalez for making this great city that we know as Los Angeles better by their presence and their commitment to ensuring that our partnership remains strong and relevant. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commander Woodard. And now I'd like to invite the Chair of the Transgender Advisory Council to speak, our friend Karina Somala, who's won more certificates and awards. About the only thing that, that Karina has not been awarded yet is an Oscar, but Karina, I'm waiting for the day. So please welcome Karina Somala, President of the Transgender Advisory Council.
Thank you. Madam President, Noori Martinez, council members, good morning.
Good morning.
First, I would like to thank Council Member Mitch Oferl for his efforts to bring visibility to the transgender community through collaboration with the TAC, HSEID, and various departments and officials. I'd like to thank the entire City Council for your exceptional leadership and support for our community and keeping eyes for our, on our community. I also thank the members of TAC for their vital commitment and dedication in advising the policies directed to housing. To housing, and most important, the issues and matters that affect our community. Today, we are here to further our goal of keeping the city's transgender community visible and safe. Transgender Awareness Month is a time for transgender people and their supporters to take action and assist in educating the public what transgender individuals face on a day-to-day basis, prejudice, discrimination, and violence. Here in Los Angeles, we have city officials who are fully supportive of our community and assist us in making sure that human and civil rights of all our citizens are protected. We continue to work diligently with LAPD to ensure that violence towards transgender community is taken seriously and there is immediate response to all hate crimes. While there is much work to be done, we are determined to work together for the betterment of this city and our community. Thank you for your wonderful council presentation celebrating Transgender Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karina, for all that you do and the council as well for the volunteerism to help this community. We appreciate that very, very much. And now let's take a moment for the TAC members to introduce themselves to us, and I understand we have a video.
We are the Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council.
The purpose of the TAC is to advise the mayor, city council, elected officials, and governmental agencies on how to implement policy, programs, and projects that tackle the issues that matter the most to the transgender community in Los Angeles.
We are community-led.
We are project-based.
And we are policy-oriented.
Hello, my name is Karina Somala. I'm the Chair of the Transgender Advisory Council. My pronouns are she and her. We're here to stay. We need to be respected. We're here to stay. We need to be respected.
Hello, my name is Eden Anai Luna, and my pronouns are they and them. The transgender and non-binary communities need your support because the youth and our future is fluid.
Hello, my name is Lucky Alexander, and my pronouns are he/him and Superman. I think it is important that my community is visible because trans men exist too.
Hi, my name is Maria Roman, and my pronouns are she/her/s/hers. I think it is important that my community is visible because our lives depend on it and our future is trans-led.
Hello, my name is James Wen, and my pronouns are he/him and his. I choose to serve my community because our courageous voice and resilience transforms the world.
My name is Jasmine Creighton, and my pronouns are genderful and gender fierce. I feel it's important that we are visible because our lives matter.
And we will not be erased.
Thank you, members of the TAC. What a great video. I hope to one day be gender fierce myself. And now I want to introduce Francisco Ortega, Director of HSEID LA. Francisco and his team, which includes, as I mentioned, Chui Orozco, endeavor to make the recommendations of the TAC a reality. It's terrific to work with Francisco and his team. Francisco Ortega.
Madam President, fellow City Council members, I want to just underscore how humble we are on behalf of the Housing Community Investment Department, our General Manager, Rashmar Cervantes, and our Assistant General Manager, Abigail Marquez, to say how committed the department is to continue to work with the folks that you see behind me. We are humbled because they work harder than any group that we've ever worked with. They're tireless, they're fierce, they're people who continue to push the boundaries, but beyond that, they're people who are humble, who are brilliant, who I think challenge us. So I just want to have the whole chamber give them a round of applause because these are the people that are changing the face of Los Angeles. The work is not done. We continue to advocate on several fronts. As a matter of fact, yesterday, there was a large job fair at the LGBT Center that a lot of these folks behind me continue to advocate for. On that front of economic development, jobs, job creation, and getting transgender people jobs, viable jobs. Also, you know, there's a lot of work being done by this group here on housing issues, on the housing front, public safety. The health of transgender and gender-fluid community members is a big concern. As you know, and as Councilmember O'Farrell, who is, by the way, the champion of this work, who has continued to bring attention to the plight of transgender individuals, not only in the city but in the region, want to say that we continue to double down on those efforts. We continue to support the TAC, but we need your support too. We need council to also understand that this is not just one council member, but it takes the full city, it takes a village. So thank you so much. We will continue to work with the transgender community. Want to also acknowledge Ms. Brown and Ms. Gonzalez, who are being honored here today as well. So thank you for the opportunity to do this, and we'll continue the work.
Thanks, Francisco. Thank you. Thank you so much, Francisco. This month, for the Transgender Awareness Month, the TAC elected to recognize two outstanding trans women who truly make a difference in the quality of life for trans people in Los Angeles. Brenda Gonzalez is a Latin immigrant transgender woman living with HIV for the last 24 years. As an activist, having volunteered for Bienestar Human Services for one year, and now working as a health educator, patient navigator for the past 21 years in Los Angeles County. Brenda is a role model, a support system, helping her community find medical, housing, employment, mental health, and legal and immigration services. Brenda is truly an agent for change. I'd like to present the certificate, the first honoree, to Ms. Brenda Gonzalez.
Good morning, everyone. Oh my God, big surprise for me. This award has been nice. It's recognition and celebration of my 22 years working in Bienestar and RSC for Transgender Latina. Everything is possible in my life because, you know, I had passed because right now is different life, different notion for transgender Latina and transgender power. I'm continuing to work for my goals, for my dreams. Everything is possible for transgender. I don't care race, color, religion, sexual orientation. The best and most is transgender power Latina. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda, and congratulations. Now, for our next honoree. Some may know Carlicia Giselle Brown from her 19-plus-year career with MAC Cosmetics and as their Viva Glam Ambassador. Others may know Carlicia from the 2017 Showtime documentary, More Than Tea. However, I know Carlicia as a fierce dancer and performer who earlier this year performed at Our South LA Pride that was hosted by Council President Wesson and Councilmember Harris Dawson. To know Carlicia is to understand her passion for her community. Carlicia is not afraid, I would say fearless, in standing up for what is right. Carlicia is also very much an open book. Refinery 29 featured Carlicia in a short documentary showcasing her 10 procedural facial feminization surgeries. Carlicia radiates resilience and hopes that her life experiences provide a roadmap for our youth so that they can benefit from the experiences that she has lived. I'd like to present this certificate to Carlicia Giselle Brown.
I just want to say thank y'all so much for this opportunity. When I found out I was going to be honored for my advocacy, I thought to myself, how did I get here? And I can tell you, it wasn't from a pedestal or from being cut from a very specific cloth in life that gives me benefits that I don't have. But I can tell you, what got me here is vigor and the ability to stand up for what's right in the face of injustice. I'm one of those people that, whether it's losing a trans woman or seeing Latino children being locked up or seeing black men killed by officers, I'm one of those people that's going to use my platform to speak up, and I'm one of those people that I could care less whose feathers I ruffle because I'm going to ruffle them. And I think, thank you. And I'm just so thankful to share this space with my community and with all of you, and this fight is far from over, and it's barely begun, and it's people in my community that are making it easy for women like me to stand up and say enough is enough. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Carlicia, and congratulations again. I want to thank our colleagues, everyone in here, everyone who is on board for elevating this cause to make sure that transgender and nonconforming communities remain visible and more safe. And the more of us that participate in that cause makes the community more visible and, by extension, much safer. On Wednesday, November 20th, the country will observe the annual Transgender Day of Remembrance. Here in Los Angeles, we will honor the memory of those lives lost. In particular, I want to remember the life of Los Angeles resident Vicky Gutierrez, who we lost in January of 2018 to an act of violence. Vicky, who stood with us right here two years ago, was a Transgender Day of Remembrance volunteer. We remember you, Vicky. We will never forget. And I stand proudly with these community advocates to say that the transgender community will not ever be invisible. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell? Mr. O'Farrell? We have Mr. Corretz to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, for leading this effort here in the city and for adding a few days to Transgender Awareness Weekend Day, which is certainly appropriate because of the discrimination and terrible violence that this community faces. So I appreciate that. Few issues arouse as much ignorance based misunderstanding and overreaction to the reality that some people just aren't the gender that they're born into, but that is not who they are. They are the gender that they choose. It's caused irrational fears, unwarranted legislation, intolerable discrimination, and violence. And we see some terrible legislation relating to everything from bathrooms to discrimination in military service. And it just has to be halted, and a lot of it is irrational prejudice. And I think by increasing awareness, we dramatically reduce that possibility. I was honored years ago when I was in the legislature that the community trusted me with anti-discrimination legislation that was banned in terms of healthcare. So an insurance company then couldn't deny a policy to a transgender individual, nor could they deny benefits that were given to other folks. And I was proud to have that opportunity. I think we're on the right path with transgender awareness, but we still have a long way to go. And there's so much violence, and there's still a high suicide rate and a high unemployment rate, and all the things that we need to change and we can change with education. So I thank you for bringing this to us. Hopefully, as we continue to make this effort, we'll certainly reduce that lack of awareness, at least in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Back to you, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes it. So let's all fight for people that need us to fight for them. We are all in this together at the exclusion of no one. Thank you, and may God bless.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretz, are you ready for your presentation?
Colleagues, you'll probably note the irony of me making this presentation since I'm probably the least technical council member, although I can text and email. But today, it is my honor to recognize someone who's had an extraordinarily impactful and unprecedented influence on the lives of everyone in this room and on the earth. Professor Leonard Kleinrock is a distinguished professor of computer science at UCLA, where he's been a professor for 56 years, and joins us today with his wife Stella. Fifty years ago, on October 29th, 1969, Dr. Leonard Kleinrock and his team at UCLA ushered in the modern technological age. He is the father of the internet. The first transmission were the letters LO sent to a partner lab at Stanford, meaning to spell login, but the system crashed after successfully sending the first two letters. Dr. Kleinrock later commented, "The first message on the internet was low, as in low and behold." Dr. Kleinrock's work has forever changed the way humans communicate, maintain relationships, and access information. His invention began with the ideals of being ethical, open, free, trusted, and shared. Over 2,000 years ago, Aristotle stated, "Man is by nature a social animal. Society is something that precedes the individual." The internet has enabled us to reach unprecedented levels of connection with each other from email to smart devices to social media. We are able to connect with people we may never meet in person and enjoy the differences of humanity. And beyond social communication, think of all the advances since that first transmission: digital commerce, streaming entertainment, revolutionary medical devices, smartphones, smart cars, and there are daily advances towards high-speed internet and space. Last week, Mayor Garcetti presented Dr. Leonard Kleinrock with the Key to the City in recognition of his work's impact. Dr. Kleinrock is only the fourth recipient to be honored by Mayor Garcetti with a key to the city. The first three went to Stan Lee, Laron Goobler, and Vin Scully. And if anyone doesn't know about any of those three, you can look them up on the internet and find out more than you ever would have dreamed possible. I'd like to point out that Dr. Kleinrock didn't just push a few buttons and change history. If you read his op-ed in the LA Times or Reddit last week, you'll know that with his invention came great responsibility. Because all of the world-changing value add that the internet provided, it also brought with it the inevitable commerce and competition, spam, data mining, and even the dark web. And who could have imagined foreign governments influencing elections through the internet? Dr. Kleinrock is actively working on data and protections to hold websites more accountable. His vision is to provide protections that he and his colleagues intended. And while Al Gore didn't actually invent the internet, Dr. Kleinrock can tell you that he did play a significant role in its development as well. And so I'm honored to present Dr. Kleinrock to the City Council.
Thank you so much, Councilman Corretz and to the City Council. Of course, it's a great honor to have the internet recognized by the city in which I live. And the history is, that was not always the case. You may not know, but the machine that launched the internet, which we honored last week at its 50th birthday, was scheduled to be thrown away once it was replaced by a more modern piece of machinery. So I had to hide it in my office for decades, and it's the size of a refrigerator. That's not an easy job. But managed, in fact, to preserve it as one of the most valuable pieces of equipment on the internet. You also heard Councilman Corretz point out that the internet was founded in a culture, a unique culture, of trust, ethics, free, shared, reliable, with an organization of researchers and government funding that basically encouraged that kind of environment. In fact, we coined a phrase to describe how it was done, and it's, an example is here in the council. You delegate authority to trusted parties. And of course, you represent the people behind you who have delegated that authority to you. Same with us. We had research to do, systems to build, and so we found the best people, the most capable people, and said, run with it. We're not going to control you. Use your imagination, your creativity, and build this great thing, this moonshot, if you will. And that kind of culture is what launched the internet we have today. That kind of culture created and curated a system for 25 years until the mid-'90s, when we reached over 50 million people and reached out to the consumer world, the public, across national boundaries. And then we began to see, as was pointed out, the dark side emerge when bad players, after all, the power of the internet is to give an individual with a computer and a high-speed line access to millions of people immediately, cheaply, and anonymously. And as powerful as that is, it also gives the power to the dark side. and anonymously. And as powerful as that is, it also gives the power to the dark side. So it's our challenge today to mount an effort to try to reverse that process, and it's going to be a very difficult task. It's going to involve not only the researchers and the scientists, but the industry, the government, and more importantly, the citizen users, to get together and react to the things that are being thrust upon us as users: your privacy, your security, your personal data, your funds, the pornography, and all the rest of it. So there's a challenge in front of us now, which we're ready to meet. So once again, I thank you very much for this honor.
And now it's my honor to recognize October 29th as Internet Day in the city of Los Angeles and to recognize Dr. Kleinrock as the father of the internet.
If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Jabari Jermaine, are you here? Come on up, sir. Eric Spillman? Eric Spillman, are you here? Muriel Jones, are you here? Sabrina Huerta? Sabrina Huerta? Go ahead, Jabari.
Good morning, once again, City Council. I have returned, as we will continue to return. My name is Jabari Jemani. I am a firefighter with the city of L.A. and the director of the Afibah Center in South Los Angeles. I stand with men and women, and as I have for the past few months, in fighting the injustice of the imposition of our councilperson, Marquise Harris Dawson, serving us an eviction notice at our center, where we've served the South L.A. community through an Afrocentric program of education and culture for the last 20 years. I've heard it said, as many of us have heard, is that evil triumphs when men and women of goodwill say nothing. That is why we continue to come here and push this issue. There is still time to turn the hands on this to something more palatable for all of us, and we stand firm and hoping that we can reach an agreement that will satisfy this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Evelyn Scott. Evelyn Scott coming up. Brandon Brinson? Brandon Brinson, are you here? Kathy Lazenby? Kathy, come on up. Ma'am, what's your name?
Hi, my name's Evelyn Scott.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, and I'm a Phase III Tier 1 Social Equity applicant, and I've been here on several occasions. Today, I want to talk about integrity. You guys throw that word around like confetti, but the definition of it is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. This has not been displayed in the city of Los Angeles Social Equity Program. I'm here today to echo the letter that was penned by Council President Herb Weston regarding the failure of Phase III Round 1 by the Department of Cannabis Regulations. In order to correct the failed process, we strongly recommend that all applications be processed. This is driving me into debt before I can even get my business open. And where is the DCR? No one has addressed this failed system publicly. You guys are asking for one of the biggest lawsuits Los Angeles has ever seen. This is social equity, not corporate equity.
Sir, what's your name?
Brendan. Herb Weston, Marquise Dawson, Kat Packer, you have done nothing for this black community's social equity. Everything you guys have done has been very detrimental. The social equity program is for low-income residents that were affected by the war on drugs. How are there several millionaires in the first 100 applications that own million-dollar homes? There is no way they went through a vetting process. We have video and audio evidence that this system was breached, allowing over 30 people to access the seller system at 9:49 a.m. on September 3rd. We also have proof that everybody had access 30 seconds before 10 a.m. on September 3rd. And how is it... And how is an audit being done on a system that's still moving? What exactly is it that you guys are auditing? Because an audit would prove nothing other than every piece of corruption that has taken place during this process. We're demanding that every goddamn application be processed right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Come on up. Are you Kathy?
Yes, hi, I'm Kathy.
Are you Kathy?
Yes, hello.
Give me just a second. Let me just call a couple more names. James Green, are you here? Come up to the podium, James Green, the Red Chief. I don't think I see him. Robert Kelly?
Quite a word.
Anibal... Excuse me, Mr. President. Anibal Linares, are you here? Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
Hi, my name is Kathy Lazenby. I'm a former substance abuse counselor and consultant and facilitator. I do not want the Aviva Center closed or evicted because the information I received has been informative, beneficial, and profound. For over a decade, I have seen this center help many of my former clients and their families. The center is the glue to our community, connecting people from all walks of life, because it's a multicultural center. Thank you for listening, and we intend to organize until this impending eviction is lifted.
Thank you very much. Robert Kelly? Anibal Linares? Henry Stimson? Lahevin Jones? And Carmelita Wagstaff. Good morning. Are you Anibal?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm a Tier 1 applicant for Phase III.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? We can't hear you.
Yes, I'm a Tier 1 Social Equity applicant for Phase III, and I believe that dragging the process longer is just hurting us and our families. So just that, my comment. Thank you.
Much. Come on. Thank you. Next speaker. What's your name?
Muriel Jones. Did you call me? I heard you.
Oh, Lahevin Jones?
Muriel.
Yeah, I called you a while ago. Come on up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the Afibah Center. My name, as you know, is Muriel Jones, and I'm president of the Los Angeles Black Restaurant Association. And I'm just here to speak to Councilmember Harrison Dawson. This center has provided such incredible services: educational services, social services, all kinds of services that the community has benefited from for over a decade. So we are asking that this community that has served hundreds of thousands through, as I said, cultural, social, and educational events, we are knowing that this impending eviction can be withdrawn. There's some kind of agreement that can be met that will be a win-win for the community as well as for District 8 residents and business owners. We intend to continue this fight until we know that...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Hi, good morning. What's your name?
My name is Lahevin Jones.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I am a qualified Tier 1 and Tier 2 Social Equity applicant, a longtime advocate of the medicinal and recreational use of marijuana in Los Angeles, and a certified community organizer in the 90062 area code. I just feel the need to say this on behalf of all the social equity applicants here, that the social equity application process should not be ambiguous or hard for us to understand in any kind of way. The social equity program should not be biased, bureaucratic, or have any type of red tape involved. It should be fair. And when I say fair, I'm speaking about the type of unfairness that would allow the first 100 applicants in a first-come, first-served system out of 832 to receive temporary approval, or be the likes of those that do not come from our communities and do not qualify as social equity applicants. This process should be fair for us, and the only fair thing to do is to approve all 832 licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. What is your name?
Good morning. My name is Carmelita Wagstaff, and I'm here to reiterate what I said the other day to you, that the system was compromised. I'm a social equity applicant in the 8th District, Marquise Dawson. And I want to say to Mr. Dawson, who is talking right now, that we all voted for him. We expect that he do the right thing for the people in his community, and we are the community that put him where he's at. And another election is going to be coming, and if he doesn't do the right thing and push for pushing all 800 applications to be processed and then vetted, then, you know, we will definitely be looking to make sure he doesn't get back into his position as city councilman. Because we pay him... We're taxpayers that paid for him and worked hard for him to be where he's at. And I would hope that him and all you guys would do the right thing, because any system that's compromised, if one compromising thing that happens in the system, the whole system's compromised. Same thing in an election. If a machine is wrong, if something is wrong, then they're going to take a retaliation of all those votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Henry Stimson, are you here? Henry? Rick Ross? Is Rick Ross here? Followed by Wayne Spindler? Moises Estrada, are you here? Come on up. Good morning. Go ahead.
Yes, I am a Tier 1 Social Equity applicant for Phase III, and I am a community member of Mr. Marquise Dawson in the 8th District. I am here today to speak to you about the unfair treatment of people of color in a community that has been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs and this process that we've been going through for the last over a year, and two years, excuse me, and the way that we've been treated and left out of this process. And it's been affecting us in the way that they promised us that transparency and the things that they said to us is not coming true. There haven't... There hasn't been fairness in this process in allowing us to be able to be... For social equity be for what it's for and help the people that it's for. It's helping people that don't look like us. It's helping people that are not of social equity. And we need you guys to work on that and change that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. By the way, what was your name?
Naim.
Okay. Naim? Got it. Thank you. And you're Moises?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Moises Estrada. I'm here to echo what all these other community members are saying. The process was botched. You know, I've been a lifelong constituent of District 13, Mr. O'Farrell's district. A lot of these people are part of Mr. Marquise Dawson's district. We are urging you guys to please do something for us. We need to get all these applications processed. The whole point of this thing was to help people that have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. That's not happening. You know, just to echo Mr. O'Farrell, let's help the people that need to be helped. We all need help out here, all of us. Thank you.
No cake for Nury. No cake for Alexis. No cake for Monica. No cake for Ackley. No cake for that fat clerk. Keep this cake, please, away from the fat...
So would you please get on to something that's subject matters of the city?
From the rotunda, I ate it, yeah.
Okay, please get on to something that's subject matter jurisdiction of the council, Mr. Spindler.
Here is the criminal. Marquise Harris, dildo Dawson, finally shows his face. We've been waiting for years for this moment, years. Finally, he shows up. Look, now he turns because I spoke about it. That's right. So get in your chair and turn it around like you always do with your head back to me when I say, "Criminal, one term for you. Cancel the Afibah Center eviction, you dumb shit."
I see you didn't drop the N-word like you usually do. Anthony Suggs? Sit down, Mr. Spindler.
Why would you say that?
Because that's exactly what he does at every other meeting.
Mr. Spindler?
I'm not talking about that.
Hold on, guys. Guys, hold on.
That's what you always say.
Mr. Spindler, sit down.
Are you going to stop that shit?
No.
No, you... Because you... Not today, you did it.
Mr. Spindler, sit down. No, 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 no.
Mr. Spindler, stop disrupting the meeting immediately.
You know the word... You know the words you use. Sir? Sir, you want to go... Give me your name, sir. Give me your name.
I'm Anthony Suggs.
Go ahead, sir. What's your name?
It's Anthony Suggs. Okay, wait till the time?
Can you start the timer?
I'm going to start your time again. Hold on for just a second. What is your name?
Anthony Suggs.
Thank you. Go ahead. Restart his time.
Fuck you, mom. Fuck you.
Yes, he did.
Can I get the time back?
Sorry. My apologies to the speaker.
Hold on for just a second. We have Mr. Spindler, who is disrupting this meeting. Mr. Spindler, please remove Mr. Spindler from the council chambers. Thank you.
Mr. Spindler, you've been ordered to leave. You've been ordered removed.
Cancel that fucking eviction.
Mr. Spindler, you're disrupting the meeting. You've been ordered to leave.
Mr. Spindler, you've been asked to... You've been asked to exit the council chambers.
You know that guy that owns the truck with the fire and the cell?
Mr. Spindler, stop disrupting the meeting. Go.
That's what he tries to do, to make the community, sir. Not because it's worth more money, he's trying to get people out of the road. Fuck off.
And Mr. Spindler's still disrupting the meeting. Apologies to the speaker.
Stop fucking lying. That's the old motto. Stop the fucking...
I apologize for that, sir.
Oh, yeah. No problem.
You have your one minute?
As we can see, things don't get done like that. I don't think anything he was shooting for is going to happen through you guys, because obviously, that outburst, it's not going to look good in your eyes. We're starting to learn that coming here, speaking legally and positively, is starting to make a difference, obviously. So we're going to keep coming, and we're going to keep letting you guys know that this social equity program has failed, and we're going to provide proof. We're going to provide evidence to the position until we get all processed applications through. We're going to continue to keep pushing the fight. I know you all, you know, some of you guys might not support it. Some of you guys do. I'm not here to judge who cares or not, but this is a situation that's for the positive, as in the other act I came here for, for the Medicare. I've seen that they pretty much doing the same fight we're doing. So basically, I got a lot of people coming in here fighting to get something done. And I'm starting to learn it's done with positivity and through legal paperwork. And we get into the position where hopefully we're going to be able to get that done. So thank you, guys, and y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ignite Daniel. Are you here? Ignite Daniel? Aaron Domio, are you here? Come on up. Good morning. Go ahead.
Greetings, Council. Ignite Daniel with Life Development Group, here to reiterate the voices of my brothers and sisters and fellow community members regarding the failed processing of Round 1 of Phase 3. We have provided irrefutable evidence that shows what has taken place in this round and the lack of, what is it? You guys take an oath to uphold community, to put the community first, or something. I don't know the correct verbiage, but I'm sure you all should know it. And it is a part of what you came here to do for the people that you say that you represent. And that lack of representation is apparent in what has taken place in this round and how this is being allowed to be drug out in the manner in which it is and watered down and not representing those. and not representing those that it has affected most. You guys have a good one. Peace and love.
Thank you. Are you Aaron?
Hi, my name is Aaron Domio. I'm a Tier One Social Equity applicant. I'm here with Life Development Group, and here, I'm just here to say what everyone else is saying, like this process wasn't fair, there's evidence that it wasn't fair, there's corruption coming out from the DCR, and yet you guys are still pushing it through. The top one hundred list doesn't even represent the demographics, and then come to find out there's millionaires on the top one hundred. Why, how does that even make any sense? That's not social equity at all. I thought we were here to help people with, that needed the help, not give more help to people that already have everything. So I'm asking that you guys push through the eight hundred, and I'm asking that you guys vet the people like they're supposed to. They're not, you guys didn't even do a good job vetting, so please do something. Please step in and, and stop the DCR.
Thank you very much. Mike Greenspan, are you here? Come on up, Mike. Someone fill out a card for Michael Jackson or Harriet Tubman?
Mike Greenspan. Seven and two is greater than four and five. Anybody knows that. Well, almost anybody. I see that we have some things on the board, and it talks about transferring funds here and transferring funds there, and one day maybe we'll transfer funds from that losing football team, the UCLA chickens, bawk, 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 and use the funds locally for the homeless support services. But you see, we've got two different philosophies. Herb Wesson and Gil Sadio want to increase the state income tax, and they want to do this Lego kind of 3D printout housing, but the real agenda was to increase the taxes. And I just want to take tax money that's being poorly spent and spend it in a better way. There's plenty of homeless people over there in Westwood that could actually use the money a lot better than a loser football team that can't beat its meat. I mean, what can I say? It's as overrated as those Texas Longhorns, man. What a shitty team they are. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? I'm going to go ahead and close it. You want to come up, sir? Did you fill out a card in the back?
I won't use the answer, Mommy.
I might have called your name, so, no worry about it. Just go ahead and stand behind-
The Department of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to collect information regarding Title VII, Title VIII Civil Rights Acts of 1968. I'll amend the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, PL 10430, Title VI of the Civil Rights Acts of 1964, PL 88357, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1972, amend, PL 9312, Section 109, Title I, Housing Community Development Discrimination. That's what you've done to Afibah. That's what you're doing to the community, because you don't like the color of our skin. You bring up the issues of that N-word, not us, you disgraceful woman. Yeah. And besides that, people have to have work. Get those goddamn permits in here for that Measure 64. Let these people's permits go through. Let them work. Otherwise, you're nothing more but racist, disgraceful, hopeless, fucking city attorney assholes.
Mr. Ru, hold on for just a second, Mr. Ru. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to do, for the record, thank everyone in the audience that came today to speak about your issues, and I really want to thank all of you, but I also want to clarify and let you know that unfortunately, and when you come to more council meetings, you will see First Amendment in, in action, and unfortunately, we have several individuals that come to every single council meeting and speak racist, sexist, misogynistic, I mean, you name it, the amount of words that some of these individuals that say in this chambers, not just including the N-word, but so many other words, is completely unacceptable, but because of First Amendment rights, it happens. So I just don't want people to be confused. We allow for everything and anyone to voice their opinions as long as there's no, it's not a threat to harm to a person, but just wanted to explain to you some of the antics that go on in this chambers, but for the rest of you from the community who are here, thank you so very much for coming, and we want to make sure we afford you the time to express your concerns and your viewpoints. Unfortunately, we have to allow everyone else who we might not want to hear, but we still allow them to say it. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
My name is Mark, and I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, sir, for just a second.
Yeah.
Did you sign up?
Yes, I signed up too, and you didn't say my name or his name.
No, you're, hold on for just a second. I'm going to let you speak. I just need to know what your name is.
My name is Mark Jones. But I don't, I don't want to stop the proceeding.
Oh, is it Nuriel Jones?
I'm Mark Jones. I was signed up right after him.
That's not who I have on the, on the record. So just, give me just a second. I just need to make sure you're on the record. Go ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, I understand what all you nice people are trying to do. I know it's a hard job, but then there's also a thing called having ethics when you're sitting up there. We come here all the time. We understand that these people had their freedom of speech. You have not seen any of us get up and get outraged and say anything, but for her to say, surprised you haven't used the N-word, that's antagonizing and instigating. So if you're going to be a public servant, also don't be an instigator. We understood he didn't say it today, and we spoke to him out in the lobby about that. See, you don't know those things because y'all sit behind here and act like everything is okay. You shouldn't do that. You should grow up.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for that. There's also children in the room sometimes, and these words get used and thrown around. He might not have used it today, but he's done it in front of children and women, and so if you're going to be brave, if you're going to be brave, make sure, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Sir, come on up.
My name is Madison Shockley. I just want to say the social equity program doesn't have to be a failure. It's currently in a failed state, but it can, it can be fixed. The only success I've seen from the social equity program is that over eight hundred of us found properties and investors and got basically turnkey ready out of the sixteen hundred. That's fifty percent of us got ready. So y'all should process all eight hundred and two now. Colorado has about seven hundred and fifty thousand people, and they have over five hundred locations, and, and they're doing fine. They don't have too many shops. Los Angeles has over four million people. We can lift the undue concentration to instead of every ten thousand people, every five thousand people, and we need this body to do that within the next three weeks before y'all go on vacation. It's too late. We're losing our investors because they don't want to pay another month of rent without certainty. Give us certainty, please.
Mr. Moses?
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, you're just plain out of line. You follow the council rules. The council shall not discuss or take action on any general public comment. That's your rules. The Marines, it's been said today, Marines win as a team. Well, so does society as a whole, doesn't it? Half the homeless in the nation are here in Los Angeles, forty percent are black. The Jewish Center last week received fully funding and a new building. The Afibah Center, under Dawson, standing there in blackface, received zero funding for twenty years and an eviction notice, evicting Dorset Village, evicting the unemployment office, damn the community, tried to get 5401 for himself. This is criminal activity. Dawson, you will be evicted with your destination, Crenshaw gentrification, black business destruction project.
Thank you, sir.
No business.
Thank you very much. Sergeants, can you get the letter from Mr. Moses, please?
A query of signed letters to the FBI.
Thank you, sir.
And the, and the-
Mr. Moses, your time is up. We'll take the letters. Thank you. Next speaker? Ma'am, what's your name?
Amara Brown.
Got it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Betty, I'm a social equity applicant. I'm a Life Development Group member. I'm here because I support Council President Wesson's recommendation to process all applications submitted during the Phase Three retail round one application process. We urge you to call for an emergency motion to proceed with processing all the applications. We are aware that you're aware of the corruption and doing nothing about it. I want you to know that this is war to us. We're going to fight, and we are not going away.
Thank you. Members, that concludes general public comments. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, do you have any announcements? Ms. Rodriguez?
On Sunday, November tenth, which is the Marine Corps birthday, we are having a salute to veterans at Ritchie Valens Park, Ritchie Valens Park in Pacoima. The Bob Hope USO will be doing a musical tribute to all the branches of the military at this event, as well as we will be providing free food for our veterans in attendance. We have stand downs, we have a number of installations that will be there, so we invite the community to come join us. Then to be followed on Monday, November eleventh, the annual San Fernando Valley Veterans Day Parade, which will occur in Mission Hills. So we'd like to invite all the San Fernando Valley members, as well as our friends in other areas, to come join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any other announcements? Mr. Sadio and Mr. Bonin? Leo? Announcement?
Go ahead.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you. In the wake of the fires that have taken place over the past few weeks in Pacific Palisades and Brentwood, Fire Chief Ralph Terasas and I are holding a fire safety town hall with the LAFD and other agencies tomorrow from 10:00 AM to about 1:00 PM at Paul Revere Middle School on Allenford. And on Wednesday night, a number of folks from LAPD and I will be holding a public safety town hall in Mar Vista, 6:30 PM at Daniel Webster Middle School in Mar Vista.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Sorry, let me cut in one moment. I think that was Mr. Herman shouting. I can't see him, but it was.
Of course it was, of course it was Mr. Herman.
So, Mr. Herman, don't do that again, or you'll be kicked out.
Mr. Sadio?
Yes, colleagues, I think it's important to acknowledge significant historic events so that we can learn from them, and so I think it's important that we acknowledge both the birthdays of Council President Herb Wesson and of our dear colleague, Marquise Harris Dawson. I want to bring that to the attention of the council, but, they're both young in spirit. But I, I mentioned that because I wanted to note that it's also twenty-five years today since the passing of Proposition 187. I'm going to tie you into this historic moment. And what's important about that, there's many things important about that, and Proposition 187, twenty-five years ago, was passed fifty-nine percent to forty-one percent. It was an anti-immigrant proposition. It was during a difficult economic time in our state, in our nation. Our economy was changing. We were losing major industries. The very nature of our economy was changing, and there was incredible job loss and loss of revenue for the state, and of course, as is the case, and we see it today on a national level, immigrants were blamed for the loss of jobs and the decline of our economic state. And so, though, from that, as, as we often say, not, nothing, nothing bad comes that doesn't include good, and so out of that came a movement against Proposition 187, and it was a broad movement. It was a coalition of students, of community groups, of the Catholic Church, other churches, moderate and thoughtful and intelligent Republican, Republicans like Jack Kemp, William Bennett, but also it was led by the labor movement. And it was the first time in this nation that organized labor spoke up and protected the rights of undocumented workers. Unions like my union, SEIU Local 660, and others like HRE, Justice for Janitors, the Machinists, the Carpenters, the CWA, unions throughout that were beginning to organize undocumented workers, took up the mantle of that call and began to organize in the community. And one of the big events of that time was the march here in Los Angeles. Over a hundred thousand people marched in defense of immigrant workers' rights and the infrastructure for that march, and we know that marches aren't just people getting up and walking out, but there's a need for permits, there's a need for restrooms, there's a need for closing streets, there's a need for building the stage. All that infrastructure was supported and funded by the labor movement. Richard Alatorre was here, made sure that all the permits were gathered. It was in a significant event in the history of the city. It was the largest pro-immigrant, pro-civil rights for undocumented event in the history of this nation, and so tomorrow we will commemorate that event here at the State Park, twenty-five years beyond Prop 187. We will commemorate it, and it's important to note that there's lessons from that. One was that California leads the way, as we say, both in good and in bad, and in good, California provides driver's license, scholarships, opportunities for civic engagement, it's a sanctuary state, we're a sanctuary city. Immigrants can participate in commissions, they can become attorneys and doctors in this state, and it shows that, in our state at least, hope triumphs over fear. On the other hand, in our nation, we are encumbered with hateful rhetoric coming from the White House, followed by the largest increase in hate crimes. Twenty percent of all the hate crimes are now specifically tied to Donald Trump. There's a separation of families, deportations, people are hounded outside of courtrooms, and finally, we know that children are placed in cages. Fortunately, we believe that the lessons of hope over fear will triumph and show the way for this nation to go forward. Tomorrow, please join us as we commemorate twenty-five years beyond Proposition 187. It begins at 10:00 AM. It's at our State Park, 1425 Spring Street, and all of us are invited, and in addition to the commemorations and the presence of many of us, will be a large, a very large program of popular music. You're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any other announcements? Seeing none, can we please rise for adjourned motions? Ms. Rodriguez, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues today had asked that we adjourn in the memory of Nicholas Scordino, who was born on May 27th, 1922, in Rochester, New York. When he was a teenager, he and his family moved to California, and at the age of nineteen, enlisted in the Army and was sent to the European Theater of World War II. He became a corporal and fought for our country during the Normandy invasion and the Battle of the Bulge. After he was honorably discharged, he moved to Fresno, where he lived for nearly thirty years. He continued his career as a barber and bought and managed several rental properties and laundromats. Nick eventually moved to Los Angeles, where he lived for the next four decades. He loved music and learned how to play several instruments, most recently was involved with a karaoke group at the Calvet Seniors Home in West LA. Nick had four children, Joanne, Dawn, Carla, and Letitia. He is, he is also survived by a very large extended family that includes a recent great-grandchild. Nick passed away on October 26th, 2019, and the world just lost another member of the greatest generation, but Nick's impact on the world will live on. Nick's son, Dawn, is a good friend of mine from Fresno. He's, he's active in real estate, but when Nick was living in the VA facility in North Hills, which is just actually in Mr. Lee's district, I had the honor of being able to take my kids several years ago to learn his stories firsthand in what he experienced at the Battle of the Bulge, and so we've lost another one of our World War II treasures and heroes from that generation, and just ask that we adjourn in his memory, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any other adjourned motions to my right? Mr. Correct.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of someone who I believe Mr. Sadio may remember, I'm not sure if anyone else will, longtime Dodger and two-time All-Star Ron Farley, who recently lost his battle with pancreatic cancer at age eighty-one. He spent twenty-one years as a player, the first twelve seasons with the Dodgers, and the last season with my second phase- with my second favorite team, the Angels, and he was, spent 30 years as a broadcaster for various teams, including broadcasting Angel Games with the Hall of Famers Dick Enberg and Don Drysdale in the 80s. Ron signed right out of USC in 1958 after helping his team win the national championship. He worked hard at his craft and was a steady contributor and a key part of the Dodgers winning three World Series titles while he was with the team in 1959, 1963, and 1965. Tommy Lasorda said about him that because he had a perfect swing, perfect timing, and perfect balance, he even looked good when he made an out. Fairly would eventually author his autobiography, Fairly at Bat, My 50 Years in Baseball, From the Batter's Box to the Broadcast Booth. One of his great quotes from the book was, "The worst day I ever had wearing a baseball uniform was better than the best day I could have had in any other career." Most notably, there was also a very altruistic and heroic side of him that really wasn't known to the public. As an example, in 2017, when Hurricane Harvey hit Houston, Texas with a Category Four storm causing the catastrophic flooding that all of us will remember, Ron, who was then 79, rented a truck in Rancho Mirage, California, filled it with donated food and clothing and personally drove it 1,400 miles to Houston, dropped off the donations at a warehouse and then turned around and drove back home. When people mentioned him that that was kind of amazing at his age, he just said, hey, if someone's in need, I'd like to help them out. He was a real mensch and he was survived by his sons Patrick and Steve and many fans who remember him fondly, may he rest in peace.
All right, any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.